Call this meeting to order. Would the city clerk please do the roll call?
Mayor Jankowski?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hammer?
Here.
Counselor Sherbroe?
Here.
Counselor Greensley?
Yes.
Counselor Ferris?
Yes.
Counselor Sholey?
Here.
Counselor Langley?
Here.
Counselor Stanwood?
Here.
Counselor Wilson?
Here.
Would everyone now please stand for a moment of silent reflection? The pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda today is the proclamation slash mayor's award, and I'd like to ask Superintendent Lionel Tracy to please step forward. Proclamation. Whereas Dr. Lionel Tracy is completing his fifth year as superintendent of Portsmouth Schools, and whereas Dr. Tracy is responsible for implementing education for all students, and whereas he has made a citywide impact on education in Portsmouth, and whereas Dr. Tracy will make a similar impact statewide, and whereas he will move from being responsible for 2,700 students to 205,000 students statewide, and whereas Dr. Tracy was responsible for creating a collaboration between SAU 50 and SAU 52, and whereas he created an opportunity for students to have a voice within the school community. Now, therefore, I, Ben Jankowski, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, along with the members of the city council, do hereby declare today, March 30th, 2005, as Dr. Lionel Tracy Day, and invite all of the citizens of Portsmouth to thank Dr. Tracy and wish him well as he becomes the new Commissioner of Education for the state of New Hampshire, given with my hand and the seal of the mayor of Portsmouth on this 30th day of March 2005.
Mayor Jankowski, Assistant Mayor Hammer, City Manager Hapney, and members of the council. The greatest honor is to be honored by students. In Portsmouth High School, you are it. So, thanks for playing.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Counselor Stanwood and Deputy City Manager and Planning Director Zach Cardonia, and it's on the coastal management grant for Pierce Island.
As you know, in Pierce Island, we've done a lot of work over a few years, such things as fixing up the pool area. We've now put in parking where it just used to be, there, you'd park wherever. We also have the trails that you can walk on. Some of the new projects that we're looking forward to working on are, we want to build a finger pier where the boat launching ramp is right now. Right now, there's nowhere for you to tie your boat up to when you launch into the water. And it's dangerous because there's erosion there, that there's some erosion of asphalt that can be 12 to 18 inches deep, and if your boat gets stuck or if something happens and someone gets hurt, the city could be held liable, and we could get sued. And so, we're looking to fix that. And we've applied for a coastal grant for $22,500, and then we have money set aside to match that, and we're hoping to get that started in the fall so it can be safer. Some other projects, city planning, I don't know what I'd like to talk to you about.
The green marks the trail that people can walk through throughout Pierce Island. It's a project that was completed in the summer of 2004. This is just kind of a progress report on the trail. It was a $330,000 project. Two-thirds of it was grant money, and many improvements were made to the island and trail itself, such as this kind of northern section right here. The planners were worried about possible more erosion, so we put a stone wall there and kind of like a beach rose plant to make it look more pretty for tourists. We, also in April, the Blue Ocean Society cleanup is, they're coming to do a trash cleanup, conduct a trash cleanup around the island, around the trails and whatnot, just to make it more hospitable for visitors. Some possible problem areas people thought about would be the thickly wooded area that the trail travels through. There's been no reports of any crime, litter is very low, and it's been a major family attraction, not major, but a family attraction for, you know, parents and kids to travel And that's about all. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we have the public comment session, and please, speakers, state your name and address, and keep in mind that each speaker is only allotted three minutes of speaking time, and when the time has elapsed, the city attorney will hold up a thank you sign. Our first speaker is Joanne Grasso, speaking on Public Works.
Thank you, Your Honor. Today looks like it really means spring is here for a while, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Public Works Department for a magnificent job they've done through this long, deep winter. I know it hasn't been perfect for everyone, but it has in the long run allowed all of us to get out and go about and do our jobs and get to go where we need to be. So, I just, at this point, want to say again, thank you. Excuse me. My name is Joanne Grasso, 14 Nixon Park, Portsmouth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grasso. Our next speaker is John Heinz, speaking on the African burial ground.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm John Heinz. I live at 591 Greenland Road in Portsmouth, and I have a question for City Councilor Sholey concerning the African burial ground. I know that you have held many meetings to formulate a plan to present to the city council and have worked with the state, Mr. Bovair, who is the state representative for the burial ground sites. And due to the fact that a burial ground site was disturbed, the city then had to reinter that disturbed center. So, I am going to ask, have all the work you've done with the approval of the state, do you anticipate the council accepting the recommendation of the council, of the committee on the burial ground?
Yes, I think that the council will pass it because it's the only respectable thing to do with the African burial site.
Okay. I think that that will answer the question I have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no motions have been made yet, but in due time, I think there will be a final decision.
I'm sorry.
I said in due time, there probably will be a final decision made. Just, we haven't passed anything yet. It's still in the preliminary works.
No, I think you have probably spoken with me before on that issue and on the information that you have presented to you, so I think that'll be all that will be necessary.
I'm just saying there's been no motions made yet about it, like finalize it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear that.
I'm just saying there's been no motions to finalize the African burial site yet. What is exactly going to be?
Well, I hope that this council can finalize the whole issue of the burial ground once you accept the first part that you have formulated for a location and a half site on Chestnut Street remaining open and one dedicated to the burial ground. I believe that's what you've come up with so far, and I'm hopeful that this council will accept that.
Yeah, as do I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Evelyn Sorrell, speaking on cell phones.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Evelyn Sorrell, and I live at 56 Oxford Avenue. I'm here today to plead with this council, and I mean plead. We have a problem here in Portsmouth, and not only Portsmouth, but every place, with cell phones being used in cars. And the other day, on my way home, a car was in front of me, and the woman was on a cellphone. She had a young infant sitting next to her. She went completely off the road because she was distracted with the phone. And I would like to see this council work with Conket and the state's representatives up there and see if you can't get some type of law passed. I'm not saying take away the cell phones. I'm saying a car is no place for one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Evelyn Sorrell. Our next speaker is Bill St. Laurent, speaking on the dog ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive. I see on the agenda you have a, you're going to be having something come up on the dog ordinance. Well, I hope you be careful what you do with the leash law. When I was a kid, dogs roamed around and had a good time with the other kids and followed their masters around, and we didn't worry about leash laws and all that. We never had any problems. So, I don't see where there's a need to be tying up dogs all the time. I do understand that people should be bringing little bags around to pick up the little deposit that their doggies leave, but, and that's something that, but I think that the dog could be under control of the person. I just, I just feel that it's unfair to put that string around his neck and pull the little, make the little dog have such an awful time being tugged around. So, be careful when you do your ordinance and take into account that poor little dog. My little dog is my best friend, and I don't want him to be hurt. So, be careful with my dog, and be very cautious with what you're doing with this leash law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ted Jankowski, speaking on the Joint Budget Committee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Ted Jankowski, for the record, from Fort Springfield Street in Newcastle. And I just wanted to speak to an issue that's important to the budget and the upcoming budget process. It appears that the House is ready to vote on an education funding bill that might solve a big portion of the education funding problem, but there's a $100 million gap to solve the problem. Many people have suggested that a cigarette tax might be the way to solve that particular problem. I wondered what, if the city council had an opinion on the cigarette tax itself, whether they thought it was a good idea from a revenue standpoint, whether it was a good idea from a social standpoint. I thought potentially maybe Counselor Wilson might want to address that issue later on or on the agenda about whether or not it's a good idea financially. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Farini, speaking on the city's master plan.
Mayor Jankowski, fellow councilors, I'm addressing you briefly regarding the master plan. I understand Counselor Sherbroe will be offering a report on it a little bit later in the meeting, and I would just like to say that the master plan that we have now as a city and that you will have before you for review is an example of the best that a community can do for public input and participation. The study circles undertaken through the Portsmouth listens process brought really unprecedented amount of Portsmouth citizens into the process to determine how it is we want to live our life from a planning and community development perspective. I should also direct you, in the master plan, to consider that most communities, when they do a master plan, deal typically with issues of only land use and certain other parts of really how you develop a town from a zoning perspective. Portsmouth is a little different in that regard, in that we have a comprehensive master plan that addresses everything from history, culture, and the arts to the traditional zoning disciplines. So, I commend it heartily to you. It comes from a rich public process, and I hope that you will consider it favorably. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With no further speakers on the list, this ends our public comment session. Next on the agenda is the public hearings, and our first item under public hearings is, shall the city of Portsmouth address the need for two new recreational fields in the city? Any first time around against or simply to speakers? Any second time speakers? Any third and final time speakers? After three calls and no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. The next item under public hearings is, shall the city of Portsmouth pursue the new construction renovation of Portsmouth Middle School? Any first time around for or simply to or against speakers?
Good evening, councilors and mayors. Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive. This ordinance on the middle school, I hope, construction stays with the middle school. It's a great spot for a middle school. I hope the renovations, I hope you don't vote to build a new school somewhere else because with the athletic fields around it, good central location, great views, I think the kids really enjoy, and matter of fact, the kids that I talked to enjoy going to school at such a nice school. So, I hope in the future that we stay with the old school and renovate it and whatever needs to be to keep it there. But that's the place it should be. I just can't see that school any other place. And matter of fact, we don't have a lot of land in the city of Portsmouth to be building. One of the places I understand was proposed is behind the, excuse me, behind the present high school. That's kind of isolated out there. I mean, it's a great spot, so just keep it there. Don't let us lose that spot for a school. It's undeniable that it's the best spot in town, and I think as a student, all of you have always enjoyed going to school there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any second time speakers? Any third and final time speakers? After three calls and no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. Next on the agenda is the consideration of resolutions and ordinances, and our first ordinance is the dog ordinance, and I believe Counselor Greensley has something to say to that.
The Dog Ordinance Law Committee has been meeting a couple times in the past few months about the concern about the leash law. The animal control officers are concerned about the loose wording of the current dog ordinance, which states that a dog must be kept on a leash unless you can call it by But the Dog Leash Law Committee felt that the ordinance was not strong enough, as well as the animal control officers who are concerned. And so, we looked at the ordinance, and we decided it would be a good idea to change it. The mayor's dog committee, the animal control officers, and the legal department have met a few times in the past few months, and it started out, the leash law in the 1980s was that you always had to have your dog on a leash, but then we changed it to what it is now. And last night, there was a referral that suggested it would be changed so that the committee will be deciding whether the vote is up or down, or whether you should keep your dog on a leash at all times unless it's in a dog park or a designated spot, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions, and those will be read by Assistant Mayor Hammer.
Thank you, Mayor Jankowski. Our first letter is referring to whether or not we should outlaw the use of cell phones by drivers. Honorable mayor and members of the council, insurance statistics confirm what every one of us can observe on a daily basis. Motorists who talk on cell phones are less able to concentrate on driving and far more likely to be involved in near misses or accidents. We could, of course, wait for the state of New Hampshire to address this situation. However, as it has demonstrated with the school funding issue, our state possesses a remarkable ability to drag its feet when faced with problems. Thus, I request that before a pedestrian is hurt or a child injured, Portsmouth outlaw the use of cell phones by drivers. Thanking you for your consideration, I remain sincerely Joe Artestine. May I have a motion?
I move to refer to the city manager to instruct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for the first reading at the next city council meeting.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your next letter is requesting permission to enter Hislop Park into the Backyard Tree Program. Dear council members, on behalf of the Atlantic Heights Garden Club and the Neighborhood Association, I request permission to enter Hislop Park into the Backyard Tree Program. The program, sponsored by the University of New Hampshire Cooperative Extension, State of New Hampshire Fish and Wildlife, and the New Hampshire Division of Forests and Lands, teaches you to care for your property of less than 10 acres, though activities related to soil, water, air, forest, through activities related to soil, water, air, forest, wildlife, recreation, and community. With guidance of the cooperative extension, we will choose one activity from each category mentioned and keep a journal of activities and observations. Upon completion of the program, we will receive a natural resource newsletter, a certificate, and a sign to post in the park. Thank you for your consideration. Lynn Langley. May I have a motion? Counselor Green, please.
I move to refer to the city manager with power. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next letter concerns truck traffic for Richie Lumber and requests that they enter from the road that connects to Maplewood Avenue. Truck traffic that goes to Richie Lumber on Bartlett Avenue needs to be stopped. With the children's museum being built in the Bartlett Street-Dennett Street area, there will be an increased need to protect children from the danger of the huge trucks coming into the neighborhood to make their deliveries. The city council should have Richie Lumber accept truck deliveries from the road that connects to Maplewood Street. Sincerely, Sam Tomorelli.
May I have a motion?
I move to refer to the Traffic and Safety Committee for a report back.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next letter is requesting a 5K road race on June 30th to benefit the Seacoast Rapportory Theater. Dear city councilor and mayor, I was wondering if I could have a 5K road race on June 30th at 10:00 a.m. to help benefit the Seacoast Rapportory Theater in downtown Portsmouth. The race would take place in Newcastle and go along the route I have set. I am asking your permission to let me do this. Please get back to me as soon as possible. Thank you, Ernie Greensley.
May I have a motion? I move to refer to the city manager with power. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next letter concerns the issues regarding Portsmouth. Issues of concern in the Portsmouth community, not in order of significance. Number one, affordable housing, workforce, and arts community in moderate income families. Assess existing city-owned properties for possible renovation. Utilize green technology designed to minimize use of non-renewable resources and lessen impact on our environment. Think Lafayette School. Number two, deny any application to increase the sewage outfall into the Biscayqua River that already exists. Combat any suggestion to construct a regional pipeline for sewage disposal in our tidal waterways. Recognize that without our natural resources, Portsmouth's status as an attractive community to live, work, or visit would deteriorate dramatically. Also, listen to the fisheries industry regarding the ecological impact of additional dumping of waste products into our river, estuaries, and ocean, and how it would affect their livelihood. Number three, Portsmouth is rapidly becoming unaffordable because of the endless increase in taxes for people who have lived here their entire lives and middle-income families. Our children cannot afford to return home to live because of the cost of rentals and home ownership, a difficult problem which will not go away on its own. Number four, develop additional opportunities for mass transport to lessen the parking problem in town and reduce the pollution from cars. Sincerely, our Sherbroe. Our next letter regards potholes in the downtown area. Oh, do I have a motion for the previous letter? Counselor Stanwood?
I move to accept and place the letter on file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next letter deals with the potholes in the downtown area. Dear Mayor Jankowski and city councilors, the city is looking beautiful this spring, and I want to commend you on the excellent job you have been doing this year. However, there is a problem I want to bring up about the potholes in downtown Portsmouth. Over the winter, many new potholes developed and older ones grew in size. These potholes need to be filled soon before the summer, when downtown gets very busy. Thank you once again for your work with the city. Concerned citizen, John Sholey.
Do I have a motion? Counselor Wilson?
I move to refer to the city manager for a report back.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one final letter. Dear Mayor Jankowski, I would like to recognize Mary Carrie Foley for initiating Student Government Day in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for the 27th consecutive year. Student Government Day in Portsmouth is a day when the young people of the greater Portsmouth area take over and direct our municipal government. Not only do students learn firsthand what it is like to work as a public servant, but all residents in Portsmouth, Rye, Newington, Greymon, and Newcastle have the opportunity to see just how responsible and engaged the youth of these towns are and the commitment they make to the city and their positions. Congratulations to Ms. Foley for what she continues to do for the young people in the community. In addition to teaching about the importance of a firm handshake, she is teaching commitment and service to the community. Congratulations to all the city council members today in your role as you address the issues before you on your agenda. Most sincerely, Robert Lister.
That ends the presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Next on the agenda is the reports and communications from city officials, and first, we have a report from City Manager Hapney on the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. And first, we have a report from City Manager Hapney on the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, I would like to report to you on the importance of the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, PNS, to the local community, my trip to Washington, and efforts by the community to keep the shipyard. The Portsmouth Naval Shipyard will be reviewed during this year's base relignment enclosure, as known as the BRAC, under Security of Defense Donald H. Remseld. We are bearing down on the May 16 date when Secretary Remseld will make his decision on which bases of the 425 under expectation will be selected for this closure. As you know, the PNS in Kittery, Maine is a recognized leader in completing nuclear and diesel-powered submarine repair projects under budget, with an employee capacity and work ethic that is unsurpassed in any public or private facility nationwide. This value is a source of local pride and cultural identity and provides a significant cost-saving to our nation. Of additional note is the fact that the PNS is a recognized expert in the submarine repair work, as evident by the fact that it is consistently called upon to serve as a model and a source of trainers to other U.S. submarine repair bases. The regional economic impact of the PNS is well documented and cannot be understated. With 4,800 employees and a payroll of $347 million, $318 million civilian, and $2,900 military, and local purchasing power of $95 million, $49 million in purchased goods, and $46 million in contracted facility services, the impact of the base closure would be devastating. The brunt of the closure would be borne by our families, neighbors, and business vendors that provide services and materials to the PNS, and it would be at the expense of our local economic vitality. As you know, I recently made a trip to Washington with representatives of the local chambers of commerce and town managers to make the case for keeping the shipyard open. We met with our federal congressional representatives and officials of the program. I believe they were receptive to our concerns. However, we still need to show our concern. To show your support, I strongly urge the members of the city council and the community to take part in the letter-writing campaign and Portsmouth Naval Shipyard rally tentatively scheduled for April 23rd. That's my report, Honorable mayor and city council members. If you have any questions, I'll try to address them as best I can.
Any questions? Thank you very much, City Manager Hapney. And our next item is a report by City Attorney McCormick on the Riverwalk and the scrap metal pile.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the past few months, there have been questions about the health hazards created from the scrap metal piles. With the help from the State Department of Environmental Services, the Grumel Company, state police, numerous city officials, the scrap metal piles are becoming a more safe and effective item of commerce to the community. The following procedures have been taken. The port has made Grumel spray the scrap piles with water to prevent rust dust in the wind. The port has begun a new program to collect any scrap metal debris. And the State Department of Environmental Services now conducts air quality tests. Along with the strides being made to create healthier ways with the scrap metal piles, the Riverwalk is also underway. The city has been in a lengthy process of what creates a dock or a wharf for public access to the water. After numerous years, the city is now making significant progress. The funding has been secured for creating the beginning stages of the Riverwalk. The plans of the Riverwalk are not yet complete, but this progress will lead to stages of its final creation in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you very much, City Attorney McCormick. Next item on the agenda is, I will be reading the recommendations for appointment. The first one is Roger White. He will be recommended to be appointed on the Traffic and Safety Committee. And I make a motion that the council accepts the recommendation and places it on file. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Our next appointment is for Oscar Billings to be appointed to the Dogs and Blue Ribbon Committee. And I also make a motion that the council accepts the recommendation and places it on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And our last appointment is appointing Nancy Langdon to the Planning Board. And I make a motion that the council accepts the recommendation and places it on file.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Our next item on the agenda is Assistant Mayor Hammer will be presenting the Joint Building Committee Report.
Thank you, mayor. As co-chair of the Joint Building Committee for the high school, I would like to give a report on the status of the completed and unfinished projects. The Joint Building Committee meets once a month and consists of three council members, three school board members, a city representative, the city manager, and a representative from the city planning department. As of now, most of the new high school has been completed. Work on the external avenues and internal flooring is under construction. Renovation in the career tech department is underway, expected to begin full force when school is out for the summer, as well as the culinary arts department. Ceramic tile work on the existing corridor walls has been completed for the most part, and flooring in the old section of the school will be completed during the summer as well, due to the inability to work while students are in school. The gym floor was recently reevaluated and was found to have existing dead spots in many places, and it also could not be scented down anymore. Therefore, a new gym floor will be added directly after graduation, which is now scheduled for June 17th. There will be a new parking lot created where the former school was located, and when the project is fully completed, new parking will be marked and assigned. Also, new directional signs will be put up to make driving and parking safer on the high school campus. Another ongoing external project is the construction of the curving and sidewalks. As for financial spending right now, we are at or under budget. The goal for the completion of the entire school is mid to late August, and right now the dedication date for the entire building is set for August 28, 2005. On another note, as a student, I would also like to add my sincere thanks and appreciation for the new building. As a freshman, I was still in the old building, and though it certainly did have its unique characteristics, it could never compare to the benefits of the new high school. The new building holds so many more advanced opportunities, such as state-of-the-art science labs, computer labs for every department, and beautiful visual art classrooms and equipment. Every classroom is equipped with a computer, a television, and a phone. The cafeteria is enormous, just like the new school. The spacious hallways, staircases, and classrooms make the school environment much more enjoyable. The best thing about the new school is the clean, comfortable, and very usable restrooms. I'm no longer afraid to venture into them. In conclusion, the new school has created a much more comfortable and updated learning environment, which I feel the rest of the Portsmouth High School population would agree. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Assistant Mayor Hammer. Our next item on the agenda is Counselor Sherbal will be presenting a Planning Board Report of the city's master plan.
Thank you, mayor. I'm offering a status report on the master plan regarding the land use plan. My first goal is to maintain and enhance the downtown historic role as a commercial, social, civic, and cultural center. Our objectives are to dedicate street-level space in the downtown to retail and high-volume services, uses with residential and office uses in upper stories. Our next goal, objective, is to promote downtown vitality by managing, by maintaining uses that ensure a balance of daytime and evening activity while preserving the quality of life for downtown residents. Also, to redevelop the northern tier with mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly development and integrate with the downtown. Also, achieve redevelopment for the McInnes Tree Federal Building site, which uses that contribute to the tax base and the vitality of the downtown. How I plan to do this is amend the zoning ordinance to promote pedestrian-oriented uses in the street-level spaces in the CBD. Also, review the design standards and historic district ordinance that addresses elements that promote vitality, such as building entries and display windows that revise necessary to clarify. These are just some of the strategies that we will plan. I just want to point out there will be an additional public hearing on April 28th, and I request that this report will be placed on file. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Counselor Greensley presenting the Dog Committee Report.
I gave my report under consideration of resolutions and ordinances.
All right. Thank you very much. And our next item on the agenda is Counselor Ferris presenting the Recreation Board Report.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to update everyone regarding the Recreation Board. The two PDA recreation fields we requested have officially been finished. These were, the main purposes will be for rec softball. We are currently in the process of asking for two more fields, and we've been discussing swim team hours, and the purpose of this discussion is for the hours to be more convenient for families. And we've also been discussing new things on Pierce Island, such as the new launch for boats. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Counselor Solely presenting a report on the Athletic Field.
Mayor Jankowski, I'd like to make a comment on Counselor Ferris. Honorable mayor, city council members, my name is Zach Casey, Public Works Director. I'm before you today to present you a plan for capital improvement that's in the capital plan. The plan is to create a multipurpose playing field on a five-acre piece of land. It's going to be at the intersection of Islington Street and Route 33, across from the Calvary Cemetery, formerly known as the Stump Dump. The field is colored in green, and the road leading up to the field is in gray. The funding would be over three fiscal years, 2006, 2007, and 2008. The total cost of the project is $150,000. At the time, we're exploring funding for the project from federal and state levels to help augment this project fund. Now, the timing of this plan is to be in conjunction with the reconstruction of Route 33 that they had planned. As Counselor Ferris has mentioned, there's a shortage of baseball, softball, soccer, and lacrosse fields. It will also be replacing the existing gun club. It will be removed, and the site will be leveled and capped with sand, gravel, and bone. And that's the end of my presentation, and if you guys have any questions?
When would the athletic field actually be put in?
It would be completed by 2008. It'd be, first year would just be leveling it and then filling in with the materials.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah, how much would this field cost?
The total amount that we have projected would be $150,000. Now, the field doesn't have the funding for lights right now, but it may be a thing to consider in the future. You may want to project some funds to put lighting in the fields to have games at night and practices. Any other questions?
Would it be used for, like, the rec programs, or would it be used for high school sports?
It would be used for either one. Whoever, it would probably be like sign-up kind of thing, like they do now. They reserve time slots for when you go. That would be stuff you have to work out later, but it's basically used for any, it's a multipurpose field, as you can see, it's outlined, soccer field, baseball field, or lacrosse. It wouldn't be used as a football field. Did I answer your question, Councilor? Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casey. Our next item on the agenda is Counselor Solely presenting a report on the African Burial Ground.
Thank you, mayor. As chairman of the mayor's Blue Ribbon African Burial Committee, I write a report that the committee recommends that the city close a portion of Chestnut Street to honor those who were buried there. The plan calls for a partial street closure at the intersection with Port Street. The elimination of all non-street parking and creation of green space on the Westerly side of Chestnut Street, which is, this portion of the street right here is the Westerly side. And the consensus of the committee and the area residents is, however, appeared to be for a partial street closure. Engineering and budgeting for the recommended partial street closure proposal have not yet been undertaken and are pending under the city council's review in action. No executive decisions have been made at this moment, and the committees have been reviewing the preliminary ideas, or my committee has been reviewing the ideas. It although awaits the city council's direction. And also, Dr. Richard Boisvert, the state archaeologist, is in full support of our proposed plan.
Thank you very much, Counselor Solely. Our next item on the agenda is Counselor Langley presenting a report on the Fee Study Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Fee Committee met February 3, 2005, to review both the city's non-ordinance and ordinance fee schedules. Again this year, both the non-ordinance and the city ordinance fees will be listed in the appendix portion of the budget book. A resolution is scheduled to be submitted to the city council June 20th, requesting the acceptance of the fee schedule in conjunction with all other budgetary resolutions, which will make the fees effective July 1, 2005. The respective department heads reviewed all current fees. Proposed fee changes were submitted where deemed necessary to cover rising administration costs. After review by the Finance Department, the Fee Committee held a meeting to review the proposals. The Recreation Board, at their January 19, 2005, meeting, voted to recommend a new fee for cosponsored programs other than the swim teams. The Fee Committee approved these recommendations. The fee will be $200 per team per year, and the funds would be dedicated to a maintenance fund for upkeep of recreation fields. The Fee Committee believes that the annual review and authorization of fees is important to keep in step with rising costs of doing city business. I recommend your support of the fee schedule as presented in the proposed annual budget 2005 and 2006, Appendix 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Langley. I believe the next item on the agenda, a report on the Pierce Island Committee by Counselor Stanwood, has already been addressed, which moves us to a...
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I have something else to talk about.
All right.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and members of the council, I would like to propose the idea of hiring a park ranger in Pierce Island for the summer. The job would entail having to protect, serve, operate, and maintain Pierce Island. The park ranger would have to assist the public, keep the island clean, and perform such duties as fee collection, record-keeping, and answering questions from visitors. Some required skills for this person would have to be, you have to be able to use common tools and equipment, such as small-hand tools. Must be able to walk for long periods of time and use and operate assigned vehicles, such as golf carts. And you must be able to talk and interact with people well. I was thinking we could have a UNH intern come and do that for the summer, and if not, maybe City Manager Hapney can look into the budget, and we can find some money for that. And also, another idea, if we can't find any money, is raise the fees for the boat launching ramp that we have right now, and we could use the money from that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Stanwood. Our next item on the agenda is a report by Counselor Wilson on the Joint Budget Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the last Joint Budget Committee meeting, the committee discussed various percents of increase for the budget. The committee took into account contractual obligations as well as higher utility costs. For those of you who don't know, the Joint Budget Committee is made up of members of the city council, school board, police, and fire commission. They advise the city council on city budget matters. Although while the city council makes the final budget decision, the Joint Budget Committee is a useful tool for the council, and its recommendations should be used if at all possible. If the council chooses not to ignore the recommendations of the Joint Budget Committee, then they no longer become useful and should be disbanded. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wilson. Now we're down to miscellaneous and unfinished business. It's Bernie, miscellaneous and unfinished business. All right. Well, before adjournment, as mayor of Portsmouth, I just wanted to say that Student Government Day 2005 has certainly proved to be a true learning experience for all of us. We would especially like to extend our sincere appreciation to Mayor Sorrell and the city council as a whole, City Manager Bohinko, City Attorney Bob Sullivan, City Clerk Calhoun. City Clerk Kelly Barnaby, Assistant City Attorney Suzanne Woodland, and all the department heads, specifically Dave Holden and Cindy Hayden, for the Pierce Island and master plan presentations. And thank you to everyone for coming this afternoon. And once again, we wish Dr. Tracy nothing but the best in his new position as the State of New Hampshire Education Commissioner. And we will all miss you something wicked, indeed. And before adjournment, I'd also like to say that this meeting will be rebroadcast the next two Saturdays, starting at 7:00 PM, and the school board meeting, student school board meeting, as well. And being that there is no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?